Hey, let's go ahead and get this meeting started. Thanks for coming. It's kind of sad that it takes something like this to get people to come to city councils. It'd be nice if they just came, but anyway, opening remarks. Looks like everybody is here. Opening remarks by Clay Wilker.
Yeah, well, I'll second that. I will say that it's been a pleasure serving the community for the time that I've inherited the two terms, the eight years. Been a lot of good things, a lot of things that we've struggled with and challenged with, the sewer being one of them. Anyway, I will tell you that everybody on the council is really professional and has the city at most importance to them. And thank you, citizens, for your, you know, reaching out, your time, and those of you that I've worked with over time. Anyway, and then I'll just say, appreciate everything everybody's done. Continue to support the city and the work of the council. I guess now we'll state a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, my father, we're thankful to meet here tonight. And we hope that everybody can respect the gravity of the meeting here tonight and be respectful and honor democracy and process and realize that this is all just a process that we follow and that whatever the outcome, that we can all be respectful of each other and continue to be good citizens with each other and treat each other with respect. We would ask you to put a blessing on those veterans that are currently in harm's way tonight, that they will be blessed on this recent week where we've recognized them. And we would ask that you would be with our law enforcement and others who support our communities and state that you would watch over them. Please watch over those that come to the meeting tonight and that they can return home safely. And we say this in the name of Jesus Christ.
Thank you, Clay. Appreciate that. Okay, item three, approval of the agenda.
Make a motion, we approve the agenda as outlined.
The motion made by Clay, seconded by Ryan. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item four, approval of minutes of last city council meeting, October 9th, 2025. A lot of people are there.
I'll make the motion that we approve the minutes from city council on October 9th, 2025.
Motion made by Pam, seconded by Daniel. There is one clerical error on page 10. It's the third paragraph down.
I have one on page 12.
Ropelato. It's on page 10, I think, just now.
Third paragraph.
There's spelt, yes, spelt ropelato wrong, anyway.
Okay. I have one on page 12, about halfway down, under, it's the second paragraph, under consideration of a resolution accepting updated interloper agreement.
Okay.
There's just a word missing. The last sentence, will likely always use than 20%, probably needs less.
Yep.
That's all I have.
Did you get ropelato?
Yep.
It's on 10, second paragraph, okay. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll go ahead then to item A, municipal election canvas recorder tweet.
We got the official canvas from the county today. Just going to go through it a little bit. So, first of all, this kind of goes through the definitions of all the words in there. So first of all, there's a big bill. The voter turnout was 62% for Millville, which is higher than probably ever.
Can you make that full screen?
All my glasses?
No, I have my contacts, thank you.
That's worse. It's way more get you there. I'll make it as big as I can, hang on, wait just a second here. All right. So we're not going to, we'll just go through the main numbers. So here are, we'll zoom in a little bit if you can. Here are the results, here's for the mayor race. So David Hare getting 52.5% of the vote with 424 votes, and Kim Ashcroft getting 47.5% of the vote with 383. Drop down to the council. Darcy Riplinger with 549 votes, which is 35.7%. Jacob Daniel Ames with 373 votes, which is 24.3%. And Daniel Grange with 349 votes at 22.7%. And Clay Wilker with 267 votes for 17.4%. So that means that Mayor Hare, Darcy Riplinger, and Jacob Ames are elected and will be sworn in at the January meeting. Is there any questions about the report? It's a much greater one than we've seen before. It's usually a one-page thing that we've done, but I kind of like the detail.
Yeah, it's nice. How did it go again? Obviously, the county conducted our election for us, it seems like.
Yeah.
Took a little while to give results. I didn't think it was going to take that long.
When it did, it was pretty frustrating. So we took the, they picked up the ballots as they were going the last couple of weeks, every day or so from the ballot box. And then on election night, we took them out there, the remaining ballots, and we're there at 8:00 and locked up the ballot box. And when we got there, we were expecting, I mean, Dave originally told us at 8:15 we'd have an initial results and...
They'd gone home, locked the door?
They were there, they said, we're not counting, we'll send it back tonight. They thought they'd have it by noon the next day, then it went to 5:00 the next day, then it was like 10:30 or something when we finally got initial results. And then everything went up a little bit the next day. They got 40 or 60 additional ballots counted the next day. So, yeah, it was lengthy process. But I think they did a good job. They did a good job of giving us the reports that we needed to follow state code and all that. I think they did a good job, it's just a little slower than I would have hoped.
Did they administer all the elections in the county here?
Yes. I do, I think so.
So it was good. I like this.
So the last page on there is the signature page. If you're, if you guys are comfortable with everything, if you have any questions, we'll go through it. But we'll have just one signature page passed around to all the council members to sign.
Do we have pens in here?
I have, I have one. That's my pink issue.
Corey, what's an undervote?
What's that?
What's an undervote?
If there, if you can vote for two council members, for example, and you only vote for one, or if you vote for mayor but not council member, it's an undervote. You don't vote for everything on the ballot. It still gets counted, it just doesn't, it means you didn't, you didn't select the number of selections you could. An overvote, which we didn't have any, is if you selected...
I guess that's just...
Which that would be counted, but undervotes do count?
Okay, we'll move on. Give us a vote. For item B, consideration of resolution accepting the Stewart Land Company's zone change request for agricultural A1 to residential R1 35 acre parcel 03035-0037 at approximately 400 south between 100 east and 200 east. Mayor Hare. This is why you're all here. Hopefully end this once and for all, but you've heard both the pros and the cons. I think all of you have read the information that was given from the public, you're seeing both the pros and the cons. And so, go ahead and let's discuss what you feel and what you think, and then we can call for a motion. And if there's no thought, you just want to make a motion, you'll think that too.
You guys can sit in these seats and tell, I mean, we've dealt with the sheriff, he's not going to come on. You good? Okay. All right. Come on up.
What do you guys think?
Are we going to order or are we just opening up?
Go ahead, ladies first.
Gee, thanks. Okay. Well, I have carefully weighed both sides of this. There have been emails of people in favor, so representing the people means representing all of the people and all sides of it. And I made my own pro-con list and so, for one thing, and nobody's pressure, well, I don't cave to pressure, but this developer is, I've asked him questions, like, he's not planning to do a PID, which creates a special tax district. A lot of developers do those, and then the people in that district end up paying higher taxes, so that's a good thing. He's not even planning to do an HOA, and that's a good thing. And I've told him this, he's the first developer I've met that I actually like. So if there is a way to work something out to allow him to develop this property, we could definitely do worse as far as developers go. On the other side of it, we do have some code that says, and I get the general plan as kind of a guideline, but 16.04.060 says, "All subdivisions shall conform to and be in harmony with the general plan of the city," which shows that as agricultural on the current plan. So there's that. And then there's also the fact that PNC did not recommend it to be rezoned to third acre lots. So we need to weigh that as well. Any other thoughts?
Yeah, my understanding was the owner of this land was approached by four different developers. So there's going to be some demand out in that area. And that kind of makes me nervous because, you know, it's just, what are we, we're back in the same situation again with another developer? And the way it was, the way it was initially zoned, there was a lot of considerations that have changed now because of the sewer. And it's like you were just saying, whereas in this master plan, almost like we need to leave, leave as the master plan. I do agree with you, I think this developer's great. I've talked to him many times, and I think that's a great place for a development. But I worry about the kind of worms you might be opening up if we say yes to one without having a little bit of a plan going forward that we can kind of point to as what we want the whole area to look like, especially where we're just, I mean, as soon as that, the sewer came online, there was instant interest in developing the area. I'm wondering if a pause might be good, just for a few minutes, so we can kind of decide what we, not just as the council, but as a community, what we really want that area to look like as development has more and more interest in it. But I do like kind of what you're proposing. I do think this is a really good developer that would do a good, a good job for the, for our community in this area. Those are kind of my thoughts on it.
Well, I guess. It is hard, because I definitely am one to protect, and I believe heavily in private property rights and that the, I've studied it tremendously, weighed the options, weighed the pros, weighed the cons. Talked to many people that I consider, that I look up to in the community. Some, same situation, some for, some against. And I think it is a crossroads in our community with what this area will look like in the future. And it is a bit of a decision, because I think you're right, Jeremy, it opens the door for, for what this area will look like going forward in our community, or what we want it to look like. And I don't know if very many people know, but I went back and looked at when it was annexed in, and went back through the minutes and ironically, it was my hour, very first city council meeting when it was, when it was annexed into the city, January 11th, 2018. And I was ironically against the, against even adopting it into the city at that point for fear of what it could look like in a sense. At the time, if everybody remembers, was only R1 zone, was the only zone Millville had. And that first year, I was given the opportunity to work with planning and zoning, and we created two new zones, which is now what the R2 and the R3 zone are. And at the time, I even made a push to create bigger lots citywide, ultimately got denied, which was, which is the beauty of democracy, right? But I, I, I still feel strongly about the areas being, being bigger lots and I don't have the answer. I think sometimes two acre might be a little big. I, I would love to see some sort of phased situation, I'm not quite sure how that would work, but you know, hopefully develop, I mean, I'm not necessarily for development anyway, but I'm, I'm very pro property rights, and if you own it, then you own it, and you can do, you ought to be able to, not necessarily do what you want with it, but at least use it to your benefit, right? I don't necessarily love people telling me what to do with my stuff, as long as I fall within the guidelines. And so, you know, it was interesting, because as, you know, for Mr. Brown to know, at the time, when it was brought into the city, whether it was Mr. Gibson or somebody else, I don't remember who made the annexation petition, if he owned it at that time or not, but it was stated in that meeting, there would be a little chance of a residential rezon. And so, from the very beginning, the owner knew it would be an uphill battle. And so that's one of the things that I believed at the time, and I still believe. My, my thoughts have changed some, but are still along those lines.
I think we might make another zone that was more, because now we just have those R1, R2, and 3, it's like one-third and a half. But how something that is like, what we were talking about a little bit, it was like, you know, a third, one acres, had a little bit more mixed, mixed beast, but we can't do that in this meeting. So we're just going on, if it's going R1 or not, right?
Yeah, that's a request, is there? That's a request before the council.
Yeah, that's what we're going on.
Yeah, I don't have a lot. I think the, this one seems like it's, it's got a lot more dynamics and, and issues with it of any of the, you know, the zones that we've done in the past, and for good reason. But, you know, when I think about, I think about the process, it's unfortunate that the process is how it is, how you rezone for a third, because I think there's probably a compromise out there, and that's not to say that a compromise can't come forward with maybe some less density in the, and I think that's probably up to the future plans on, and planning PNC to, you know, kind of try to work through that, but it's unfortunate process, you can't start that, that process upfront and try to come to a compromise. And then the formalization of the rezon just kind of happens from there, you know, it's unfortunate that's not happening, because it has a lot of time, and it's, a lot of people invested a lot of, a lot of hours and time and effort in, you know, having this being said, how it is. I think, I think that's all, about all I have to say regarding this. I think, you know, I believe private property rights, you know, are, are, are something that we fight for, that our country has fought for over and over, we continue to fight for that. And sometimes I think about your private property rights and, and things change. And if I'm not losing value to my property, then, then maybe it's okay for change to happen, but if I am losing value to my property, then, then that needs to be considered. Some, some of the country living that we talked about, you know, I mentioned this in the public hearing, that, that, you know, we lost that on the north end. Mayor, wouldn't you agree, we lost the country living? We've lived here, Wendy and I have lived here for 35 years, and the dirt road out on the north end of the property was there when we, when we bought the property and moved in, and a lot of things have changed. So to think that everything's going to stay the same forever, I don't know, it's a little tough call, but I do believe that there perhaps is some way to go compromise, because I do believe that the property owners have rights, but so do the citizens that live in the area. And so I hope, I hope there could be a compromise, whatever happens tonight, you know.
Well, what are some of the complexities you were talking about with this in relationship to some of the other rezones that we've talked about in the past?
Well, I think the, I mean, the South Fields are kind of the last, you know, I'm not saying the last agricultural ground around, but, but it's unique. The outpouring of the public has made it clear that, you know, that that's a unique area out there. Just the, just the public input makes it unique, of how people come out either for or against it. And then it happening during an election time, where there was a lot of publicity around it, some of that publicity, I will say, wasn't necessarily 100% correct.
Right.
From those things, right? And, and so that drove some other things. So those are just a few of the things, Ryan, I think.
Well, I, I appreciate all the comments. Personally, I feel a lot the same way. I think the hard thing about this rezon and really any rezon is hard to make the identity fit sometimes within, you know, the zone that is chosen, you know, especially in this situation where it's such a large piece of property and it is positioned on the south side of town, you know, it does have the potential to make a large impact on the south side of the community, if, if a development does go through. I look at it a little bit differently as well. Something we haven't talked about is, you know, really what's, maybe we have, but what's best for the community as a whole, you know? I think we've had people weigh heavily on both sides of this, you know? Vaguely for sure, those that are against it have made their, their voice heard. But I personally have spoken to a lot of people that feel like that Millville is going to grow, and the south side of the valley is going to grow. Maybe it's a little hypocritical of us as a council to, you know, lean on other parts of the community more heavily for residential growth and not on the entire community. I'm not saying that, that that changes anything here, but, but I do believe that, that what's best for Millville is what I'm trying to come to terms with, you know, and as a community. Growth is coming, growth is coming to the South Fields. It's important that, and I don't know that we're necessarily ready for the growth in the South Fields, I think the public feel like we're not ready for the growth in the South Fields. I throw a one-size-density approach. I don't think the South Fields should be relished or should be, should be held above other parts of the community as it's a two-acre only, or it's an act-only part of the valley. I don't think that's fair to the community. But I also don't think that it should be altered acre lots from, you know, through the entire, entire community. So I don't know what the solution is moving forward. I wish we had a better plan. But, you know, I know the value of the water is important to our community. Our springs is the highest valued water in town. We have a sewer that was built, right? I mean, we were required to, to plan for growth in the South Fields and build for growth of the South Fields to meet the density, you know, the max density that was zoned in Millville currently, which is 30 for lots. So we have a sewer system that is prepared for it. I don't know if we have the roads, though, to deal with the demand in traffic, the growth in traffic that will come with this or any other growth in, you know, the southern part of the community. But I don't think we can address roads without impact fees, and we can't address roads without developers coming and building those roads for us, you know? We don't have the ability to do that. So I also look at it from a tax side of things. If we zone the South Fields all two-acre lots, are they contributing equally and adequately to the tax base of the community? And are they supporting the costs that are created and the debts and services need to be paid? I don't know, you know? I know 30 acre lots definitely provide more financial support in that aspect, you know? Are there some short-term losses for some long-term gains? I mean, you can, you can read and study, and every economist and then every planner will tell you this and they'll tell you that, but Millville has done a really good job of managing the revenue it has to keep the cost to our community as low as possible. You know, and I think if Millville continues to develop in a, in a good way, and we can continue to keep our costs down, I think taxes will remain low for the, for the city. Affordability is the other thing I think about, you know? Affordability is the other thing I think about, you know. With this rezone, does it provide affordability to those that want to stay in Millville? I don't know. Housing is not affordable right now. If you look at, you know, even the stuff that the state provides, they're saying right now that less than 10% of the people living in their home could afford it to have to buy it today. You know, that's not affordability. You know, so when you talk about supply and demand, right? Is supply going to bring pricing down, costs down? May help affordability out? I don't know. Some say it does, some say it doesn't. So as far as the rezone itself goes, I don't know that the time is right. But I don't know that there'll be a better time, you know, to address some of the stuff that we have today. So I was hoping someone would come here with a great plan and some wonderful ideas. Because I think we need compromise in this situation. I really feel the South Fields is... I don't believe that Millville is in the business of preserving ag. And I believe that that's responsible of landowners. If they want it to be ag, they should own it and it should remain ag. And I support that 100%. But I do realize that 30-acre lots does not, in my mind, create a sweeping support of what our community is trying to be. Even through the older part of town, we have a lot of large lots. I mean, it was in '70-something that Millville went and changed everything to R1. And, you know, we still have a lot of large lots in the community because of that. But I recognize today that in a lot of communities, 30 acres is a big lot, but in Millville, it's still not. So I think...
Can I say something?
Yeah.
You guys, I want you to listen to these guys. They spent hours studying this. For some reason, they seem to get thrown under the bus, and they shouldn't be. They study both sides. They make sound decisions, which I appreciate. And I've said it all the time. I put this council up against anybody in Cache Valley. They do a great job. So I think we need to appreciate them and what they do.
Thanks, Ryan.
Let me see if someone is thinking...
Yeah.
...collecting your thoughts. I grew up in a little town called Eagle, Idaho, side of Oysing. And I remember the first person that built $100,000 dollar building. We thought he was the richest person on the planet. I went through Eagle the other, a couple of weeks ago. There was a single wide mobile home that was $140,000. It's just ridiculous. Everything out there is two acres and five acres. There's not a house that you can buy that's less than $10 million in my little town. No one lives there that I know anymore. Not a single person. And I only say that because I don't think we want all two acres. I think we want a couple. If you do all two acres, it's going to turn into that little town. It's all just those little boutique, little things. And what I like about Millville and why I moved here, I just like the families. And I think that's more 30 or half acres and those kind of things. You get those big acres, the only people that can afford it are people... I mean, I can finally afford one now and my kids are almost all under the house. My house is stupid big for my size, but I don't want to move. I like it here. So we just live in a big empty house. So I do like the idea of the compromise, of taking a minute and just really looking at making some other zones where there could be some mixed use, where we could have some other sizes, or we could have some really good developers come in. Because I don't think the demand to build out there is going to go away. You know, like you're talking about now is now. And, I mean, we do, Corey, we do have some money. We're looking at some, a study to try to take the road out to... I can't ever remember. It's by Jennings over there, that sort of place on...
It would be, yeah, near Third South, 3200 South.
It'd be nice to have the other outlet and have that in the works since we've kind of worked towards this. I talked to a lot of people. You know, and at certain times of the day, you can't get out of this town. You know, and red lines coming or going, you just, I'm not going anywhere.
You just can't turn left.
What?
You just can't go.
Just can't turn left.
I like going left. So, I don't know. I just thought I'd say that.
No, I appreciate that. I think you're right. Like I say, I'm trying to, in my own head, I've started with this from the very beginning, and that is how do you make it work? And that's just it, how do you make it work, right? Because you've got, we've got a place that everybody loves, which is Millville. And the South Fields are a big part of that. So how do you make it meet both? The request for a rezone, but yet maintain what Millville really is, you know?
Well, there's Millville, the place where the people that live here...
Millville's the people.
I think so. So are we kind of making a place where we're attracting the people we want to move in? I don't know how to say that right. That sounds really stupid. You know, like I don't want like a bunch of apartments where there's people moving in and out a lot of times. You know, people are kind of going to move here. And I met this guy this last week. He put, he wanted to move here so bad, he put notes on everybody's houses over in that subdivision right next to where we're doing. And he got someone that said, "Yeah, I'll sell your house." And was able to move in within a week, within a month. You know, I mean, is it going to take that to move into Millville in the future?
Well, we...
We have some great people and I'd like to invite a few more.
I also think we have a responsibility to imagine the future of our children.
Absolutely. I'd like them to move here.
It's tough to sit here and say, "I want to have kids and raise families, but yet I want the responsibility to provide housing for my kids" to be another community's responsibility. I think that's also really challenging.
Yeah, otherwise they'll move into my basement. I don't know if I want them to move.
So what are you recommending, Jeremy?
Let's vote, okay? I don't know.
You got a proposal? You got a motion?
Yeah, what's it called? I'll make a motion that we vote on on Resolution 2025-25.
What are you motioning?
What are you motioning?
That we vote on it.
You need to make the motion if you're going to vote.
Read the whole thing.
Jeremy, it's just, do you want to accept R1 zoning in that area or no? That's all the question is.
Yes, you're going.
Are you marginally approved?
Oh, marginally, that we deny the approval. Well, that sounds... Hold on, let me see that.
You're denying it?
Deny the approval of Resolution 2025-25.
Motion made by Jeremy. Do I hear a second? Seconded by Pam. Okay, any further discussion?
Yes. This isn't over, right? I mean, growth is coming to Millville, right? And growth is going to come to the South Fields. So at least that which is in Millville City. You know, obviously those that own the land in the county can control it for sure, as long as they own it. But I do believe that the property which is in Millville needs to meet the needs of the community. And I don't think the needs of the community in and of itself is ag. I think it is houses in some form, and it's lots, you know, to go with that. So I struggle because I don't think it's the one-size-fits-all. Somehow, as the planning and zoning, as a city, we need to find a way to bring the right type of development onto this piece of property that meets multiple needs, right? Provides affordability, provides some per se acreage, meets a blend. That's kind of how I feel about it. So I think we need to do some work as a community with the developer, with the landowner, and see if we can't find something that does that.
To that end, I know there's some money that we're trying to get or set aside to revisit the master plan. And I know we're going to be doing that. And I think that's one of the places we can take this up because that's where we can make the other zones that we've been kind of thinking about to work on a compromise.
Right.
So I know we'll be doing that in the new year. Us old guys on the council and some of the new guys. Well, that'll be something we take up and then we'll all get together again and rehash it.
It seems like it's been a general consensus of everybody that we would like to see some kind of a compromise on this. I don't feel comfortable giving the full property a third of an acre, but I do, I feel like, you know, who are we to deny other people the opportunity to live here? There have been opinions expressed where, you know, people want to move here and they can't find anything. And we shouldn't be shutting the door on new people coming in.
I agree, because I think, you know, it was said to me one time, "It's hard to be the last one in the pasture to close the gate," right? We've all moved here because of development at some point, whether it's five years or 30 years or 70 years, right? Development brought every single one of us here to Millville to enjoy Millville as we love it. And I think you're right. I think Millville is about people. And I truly feel that growth will come to this area. And I think you're right, Ryan, in the fact that Millville City can't be in the business of protecting ag. It needs to be the landowners that own the land that protect the land, right? Going forward, and I've always said that if you want to have 100% control over the property owner, right? And I do exhore everybody here to learn the process. And let's throw out some of the negativity that's surrounded this and the process to do so. I can't tell you how many phone calls I've had calling me a traitor to the community and all sorts of other negativity for something that, quite honestly, I hadn't had any part in yet. Now, if you don't like the way I vote today and you want to call me a traitor, go ahead and call me. But I don't know. It's just some of the things that's been said to me and my family in regards to this is, I don't know, borderline unacceptable to me. But I, you know, and the lack of knowledge in certain things, I just would restore and hope everybody here learns something through the process and going forward to educate yourself, to follow the city council. I've had, like Corey, or like Clay said in his opening statement, that I've had the honor of serving here in this community for eight years and I've loved every minute of it. And have made every vote that I voted, I will stand behind as doing the best that I know for the community as a whole versus one particular party or another. And so I would hope everybody learns something here during this process to know going forward that just because somebody files a petition and we accept the petition to look at it, it doesn't mean we've betrayed the community's trust or anything else. We've just put things through the process by which they have to go through. And it's been an honor serving and I wish the new council luck in going through any and all future issues that may or may not arise.
Yeah, I want to add to that too. You know, the biggest farmers in our community have had to sell at least a portion of their property because they couldn't make it. And so to get a farmer, to get a big chunk of land and say, "You keep it this way forever," is really difficult. Now, there may be some here that have the money to buy that. And I would say, "Go buy it and leave it in ag." But as far as the farmer making a living off that ground in today's society, that is tough. That is tough. Ropelatos had to sell one of their farms because they needed money. And that's what's going to happen. And so if we can plan well and make it good, that's good. But if any of you here want to buy that property, go make an offer. Yeah, we keep it in ag. We love it. But I don't know how much money you can sit in a piece of property and let it not return your investment. That's tough. That's tough. Okay, well, go ahead and call for a vote then. We've got a first and second on denial of it, so...
Just declare the motion is for deny the rezone, correct?
Yeah, deny the rezone.
So we'll call vote?
Yeah, we'll call vote.
We'll start on that side.
Well, I've been doing some soul searching, I guess, or not soul searching, but I didn't feel good about it. So I researched some things in Utah law or the Code of Ethics and Conflict of Interest thing. And I'm going to abstain from the vote because I have an ethical concern that depending upon how I vote, somebody could say that I was doing it for a reason that I have some relationship with the owners in the past as a friend. And my brother-in-law also works with them. So I'm going to abstain.
Okay, Daniel.
Aye.
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 Okay, the vote stands. It is done. Okay, let's move on to item C. Consideration of ordinance updating city code chapter 13-20 wastewater sewage council number 21.
Well, I think we're at the end of the road. So I think this should be the last update related to the sewer. This comes on the heels of what we decided a month ago and the new agreement. Obviously, reading... Corey's reporter gives you that information, but there's nothing really new. It's just a clerical cleanup change. Any questions related to it?
If you look at the Hiram code for pretreatment, it's longer than our sewer code by a lot, like three times. So putting that all in our code and then updating it when they update it is just a hassle. This is kind of the way we do things. When there's something that we rely on state code, we just refer to state code instead of putting it in our code and having to update it all the time. It's a little bit cleaner way. I double-checked with our attorney because the Hiram wastewater manager wanted it all in our code. I checked with her attorney to make sure he was comfortable with it. He said he thought it was good.
We're just adopting theirs and as theirs changes, ours will change with it automatically.
Just for pretreatment.
We just have to adopt it?
Yeah, any questions? If there's no questions?
This has been a long, hard, fought-out thing. Remember the last under this existing mayor that we got taken away?
With Hiram? Yes, yes. She's been great to work with and...
Do you have a new mayor coming in?
The same one, a new mayor?
No, they've got a new one coming in. Hiram does.
It's a Mayor Miller.
Same name, so we don't get confused.
The other Miller. Well, I'll make the motion then that we adopt ordinance 2025-11, the city wastewater sewage code update.
Okay, motion made by Ryan, second by Daniel. Any other discussion? Follow the paper.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, item D, consideration of resolution accepting a vehicle backing policy. Record a tweet. Record tweet.
So we've been adopting these policies the last couple of years, just kind of cleaning things up, um, making some clarifications. This one is, is one that our insurance is asking for if we participate in this new program they have that will save us, what did I put in there? Twelve to about twelve thousand dollars in insurance premiums. There's just some, there's some, and the staff's all on board, there's some classes that the staff has to take, like basically improvement classes that are pretty minimal, but good. And we have some policies that we need to adopt, but we have almost everything in place. This is one we are missing. Ed Care is kind of leading the charge on the, on pushing this program, which is awesome. So anyway, any questions about the backing policy?
We have to carry an org cone?
Does it say that?
No, I'm asking.
No. Just follow the policy, Ryan.
That's it? Just take some training and twelve grand? That's it?
Yeah, I mean, there's some inspections that we're doing anyway. You need to inspect your sewer manholes regularly. We're planning to do that. You need to inspect your sidewalks. We're planning to do that. So there's some stuff we're already doing. This kind of makes us do it for sure. I mean, it'll help us get it done and, um, it's just, it's, it's a decent program. There's nothing there that I'm concerned about. It's a waste of time, yeah.
Well, make a motion, we adopt the vehicle backing policy.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Daniel, second by Ryan. If there's no further discussion, well, the next class, the teacher will go forward. This one's just backing. Yeah.
Sorry. I won the pass last year.
Oh, okay.
And this is just this year?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any votes? Okay, consideration or resolution to update residential rate for garbage collection. Record tweet.
Did everybody see that?
Yeah.
And there's a copy that's on your desk.
The update?
Yeah.
The update, the update?
Yeah. So we're thinking more about this. Megan and I met today and went through some stuff. We think that, so the big, the big deal, the reason we need to update the rate is because, um, in the Waste Management Agreement, it allows for an increase every year based on the CPI index. So it's five point one percent this year, so we need to go up that much. We've talked about it in previous years that we have the fifty cents, uh, administrative charge on top of that, and that's really low. We put, that was put in place in nineteen ninety-six. And, um, most cities are a dollar fifty to two dollars, most of our neighboring cities, but they're not as awesome as we are. So, um, we were, we talked about raising that to a dollar this year, and that's what was in the resolution that originally went out with the packet. This morning, Megan and I looked at it in more detail. We think that we're okay with the fifty cents, keeping that at fifty cents. We still need to raise for the CPI index, but, um,
Our portion.
We think that admin costs can stay at fifty cents and we'll be fine. We'll need to look at it each year and make sure. This year was a little heavy on garbage with the, um, transition to waste management and a lot of auditing. It was pretty messy getting, figuring out what everybody had and charging the right amount to people, making sure that the numbers were being billed match what we're billing. But that's pretty locked in. Megan's done a good job of getting that cleaned up, so, um, yeah, I think we're, we feel comfortable with the fifty cent, keeping it at fifty cents.
Do they credit us back for all the garbage cans we don't pick up?
No.
When they're missing?
They also did charge us during sewer for not being, for, because they were pretty, they were pretty good with us.
They, they had to go through the roads.
Just like we did.
Yeah.
How do they determine on the container replacement if the customer damages it?
It's kind of a, what do you think?
It's like the alarm system, honestly.
They've done a pretty good job of accepting that when it was them, right?
Yeah, they never questioned me when I said it was broken by the driver during the dumping. Some people say, hey, my kid ran into it with her car and it cracked. And I always just pass on the same info that I get from the resident. They've never been like, yeah, right.
Can I make a request? I know that you guys aren't used to us being here, but we'd like to know what's a CPI. If you would just explain things since we're all sitting here and want to be part of this meeting, so we understand.
You got it. It's in the packet, but define there, it's a consumer price index, so it's a, it's a something that you could point to and say, that's how much it should go up based on whatever federal government determines it should be.
Thank you.
Trying to keep these guys honest, which is hard.
Yeah, they just use something, right? As a, as a gauge to make their adjustments. And that's what the CPI is the index that they work off of.
I, I just want a clarification on your acronyms and things that we might not be familiar with, so that we understand the process of what's happening.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, well, we'll make a motion then, we adopt resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-seven, update the fee for garbage collection.
I'll second it. Motion made by Ryan, seconded by Jeremy. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Oh, it's none. Okay, that's what I have. Review of twenty twenty-five business license for twenty twenty-six renewals. Development Coordinator Everett.
Okay, I'm not exactly sure, this is my first year taking it over, so you guys all got the list of our business licenses?
Yeah.
Do you have any question?
Do we have any concerns about any of them that have been expressed?
No.
Any complaints been filed that we don't know about or?
We had the one that we addressed on Canyon Road. Other than that, that's the only one.
And then I know the one from a few years ago that we revisited on Main Street. I, I feel they've done a great job, so.
You guys with the parking issues?
Yeah, with the parking issues.
We got a pretty good.
Just a little more context here, because I did not include the, um, staff report on this. If they had even, they wouldn't have known what we're talking about. The council looks at the business licenses that are active for the year, then determines if there's any issues with those before renewals go out to those business license holders so they can renew them. So just trying to see if there's anything they're concerned about.
How was it going? We got good, are they all paying? I mean, are you, are you having chase fees? I mean.
No, most, I mean, there's a handful. There's probably like six or seven that, and I did not use that number on purpose.
Sure. I want to.
No, there's one T D two here that would probably, okay. So there's a couple that haven't renewed this last year that if they do come back, then they'll have to go through the process of it. But we have everything online now that they can fill out and it's a pretty good streamlined process that.
But the hard time is coming up and there's a lot of people that don't do it by when they're supposed to and it's renewed. Late notice case, they have.
So are we covering our costs? I mean, are we?
No, we're not.
Our business license, there's more time in staff.
The reason we're not is because the state changes, so we can't charge for home businesses.
That's right.
But we still have to deal with all the work around home businesses, but, so no, we're not, we're not coming in.
I have a question. How many businesses are there in Millville?
One hundred and sixty-two.
Okay.
So fifty-three are home-based businesses out of that.
Out of a hundred and sixty-two, fifty-two or?
Fifty-three.
Fifty-three are home-based.
There's some really cool ones like Denise Dixon, they, they do custom puzzles, these really cool wood custom puzzles. They ship those all over the world.
Those are fees.
And they pay sales tax to the city.
What's that?
And they pay sales tax to the city?
I, those don't, I don't know, those don't because sales taxes collected for the point of delivery, not point of sale, unless they come to their house and pick them up and lock them away, it would be different.
All these businesses, are they paying the sales tax into the city?
Yes, any of the, any of the, any of the commercial that have qualified sellers, absolutely. Yeah.
Just saying for businesses that send something out, they collect it on the, where it's received, not where it's shipped from.
And for those that may not.
Which is great, because we collect from Amazon when it's shipped to.
A lot of these probably exist too, and the Zollinger complex down there is still Millville, so a lot of those businesses are, are business licensed here.
And they're paying sales tax?
Yes.
Any sales that would come through their facility would, yeah.
Do we need to make a motion on this? It's just a for information company, isn't it?
Yeah, you're good. Just if you want to, if you want to not to send anything.
No, I don't have anybody, I, I want to call before the council, I guess. I know they're here.
Okay. Few more comments on that. We'll go ahead and move on to item G, consideration of ordinance for re-acceptance of the Eames annexation, record tweet.
This is.
No, this is okay.
No, you do.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just, it's just a redo. It's not.
I'm gonna sit right here.
All right, this is extremely frustrating. The state code requires annexations after they're approved and signed, the ordinance to be turned into, into the lieutenant governor within sixty days. To be able to go through the process of the county, it needs to be approved and signed by the city council. So did what we were supposed to, city council approved it. It went to the county and goes through their review process, which takes six months. So you can't do it within the sixty days. So that's why I'm back here for you to accept it again, put a new date on it, send it to the lieutenant governor. The county council's accepted everything. Everything's fine on it. It's just a frustrating process. Next time we do an annexation, and if you guys only remember, we should approve it with a, a future date or say it'll be approved with the date when the county finally finishes their approval process.
Well, we, we approved this one, and I think we made the motion, so we'll make the motion again that we, uh, approve the Eames. It's just the petition, right?
No, it's the.
It's the final?
Yes, it's the ordinance to accept the annexation.
The ordinance to accept Eames annexation.
I'll second it. A motion made by Daniel, seconded by Jeremy. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I have a quick question. What's the Eames thing?
There's a half acre down, well, it's a little over a half acre down there on the corner that they wanted annexation.
It's because there's, there's two parcels that, um, half the property is in the county and half the property is in the city. And so this was to clean up some of the city boundaries and parcel property lines.
What Eames is that?
It's a good question.
Trying to place it. What do you think?
Ezra. Ezra Eames.
Ezra Eames.
It's across from the Johnson, right?
The west south corner of three hundred south. Yes. Yes. Okay, let's, let's go ahead and move on. Item H, uh, item H, Sheriff Deputy Report.
I really wish you guys would use the night because there's so many people around.
They're all here for you.
Yeah, this is terrifying. I really want to have a lot for you. I feel like it's been pretty good. I like the signs, I don't have one four fifty north. I think they're definitely in the right direction. Uh, that's probably one of your busier roads, an area where people struggle with speed probably the most out of anywhere in town. I'm not saying anywhere else. Doesn't have speeders, that happens every single road in the entire town, but that's definitely a good start.
We'll be able to move those around.
What was that?
We'll be able to move those around to other places.
Oh, they're not permanent? Hey, that's cool. Let's talk about those for a minute. Take a seat, relax. So I just wanted to show, there's a ton of data and I don't have a chance to parse through it very much. So we stuck the black, we got the black traffic monitoring box that's not the sign, so we had that up there for two or three weeks before we put the signs up. And, um, so those are weeks, so weeks starting ten nineteen, ten twenty-six, and eleven two. There's not a ton to see there.
I can't see anything.
But the back end is sixty-six?
I guess we're done with that.
Seventy-six.
At two P M.
Two in the afternoon.
Yeah, so I haven't.
Someone left the stove on, I guess.
Yeah, so, I mean, eighty-fifth percentile means eighty-five percent of the people are driving at about, um, thirty-five miles per hour on that, on that road. And this was placed at, this box was placed at second east, so that's, you know.
Right in the middle.
And it was for traffic going up the hill, so going east.
Going, going down.
Going, going up, it was a little more.
This, this is.
On four fifty north.
Just near the state center. You'll see the signs there.
So, so now there's traffic readout signs that, um, tell people what speed they're going. And I sat out there in the dark one night just down by the park to see, you could see a lot of lights go on as they, as their speed popped up, so I hope it's working. I don't know, we're getting the same data from the speed signs that we got from the black box, so we can compare that. And then we'll keep kind of rotating them because people get used to them. And I, best practice, I believe, is to keep rotating them so they're not in the same spot. So we, we've got a couple of locations that we've talked about before, but.
That gives data to him, so he can sit out there at times where people are going freaking eighty-seven miles an hour and give them the proper tickets.
Seventy-six.
So, remember.
I'm not gonna say.
I got dyslexia, but.
It's great data. The only problem is that you will find that number bounces around. We have all those black boxes that we use all the time and that's not a standard speed. So it's not like someone's going home at two o'clock and one seventy-six. I just know they're at that time.
But once you.
Or you would. Oh, I would, that would be the best day of my life if I got someone one seventy-six or twenty-five. Jeremy, you're saying, you're saying also though that you can look at the times where speed is more prevalent.
Yeah, you can see kind of patterns.
From what I've looked at.
Nothing yet.
It's across the board. I mean, there's, it's a little bit higher during, before and after school, but not much. There's more traffic for sure. So it seems worse, but it's not much higher during those times than it is other times. But again, we're, we're just starting to look at this, so.
I have seen a lot more brake lights and I haven't been tailgated as much.
Can we look into adopting an ordinance on no engine brakes in Millville?
You mean with the trucks?
Is there a demand for engine brakes?
Well, when they're coming off them hills, they throw their jake brake on or engine brake, whatever you want to call it, and you can hear it all the way across town. Nibbly has adopted a policy of no engine brakes in their town.
Problem is you go downhill grade there, Nibbly doesn't have them.
But they have gears in their trucks too.
The, 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 the brakes are also the safety for the people at the bottom too.
Yeah, you got a roundabout there.
That's a two double-edged sword, right?
Yeah. I agree with you.
Yeah, it should be a noise.
I don't think so.
Well, yeah, it's a pain.
Who would look at that?
But it's also a safety issue to have.
I know we called and they shut them down. They were coming down a lot with it.
I drive a truck off that hill that's stock at sixty-seven thousand pounds and that jake brake's one of the only things that hold it back.
Well, this is good data. I'm glad the signs have been out.
Yeah, it is good data.
Hopefully you can use it to help us so curb some of the speed problems that got in town.
That's a road that hit pretty regularly.
Yeah, yeah. We'll move them around.
Do you have any questions?
Yeah, I was gonna say, so what, do you guys have a plan as far as where you're moving them around or what?
Your house next. Oh, they're coming out that driveway just to get them.
Yeah, I would love it. Three hundred north is terrible.
We have some, we have some streets in town.
Okay.
That are some of our more problematic streets and we'll move them around to those first.
Just three hundred north is really bad.
This one.
Up and.
All of our east-west.
All of our east-west roads are bad.[1693.22]
All of our east-west roads are bad.
Our-
Yeah, we're looking, this'll help.
You can put it in my driveway if you want, I'd welcome it.
So I didn't mean to cut you off, since you were talking about that. Anything else you want to talk about? And you guys have any questions for me while I'm here? No, I appreciate what you do, Bill.
Yeah, thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am. I mean, online, I think. I have no idea how, I don't know.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Okay, let's go ahead and move on to item I. Women's social. What do you guys want, what do you, what do you want to?
Well, just a Christmas tree?
This is why-
We're gonna do it in January last year.
There's a couple of those there. If you were to hold it in December, you could invite Jake, who will be on the council. Carson's already invited her because of P and Z, but, or if you were to hold it in January, you could, so you can invite Councilmembers Grange and Welker. You know what I mean, just to- So, we generally had it in January, just because it's been, you had it in December.
I would, I'm okay with whatever. I think maybe communicate with Planning and Zoning and kind of see what their thoughts are of December, January, February.
There's one in there.
I vote for January.
January.
Okay.
Location?
Where am I at? Location, I, I thought, I thought the country club was pretty nice last time. Way better than the pavilion a year before. I like country club, I hope everyone enjoyed it. Did you go?
No, I, I probably had something to say.
You bowed out.
Was I in Texas? It's warm.
Warm, that's probably where you were. It was good, though.
Okay.
Day of the week, or what's, any preference there? And then off.
It was Thursday last night.
What is it, Friday?
I don't remember.
I think it was Friday, actually. Alright, I'll get some to schedule then.
Get it out, let us know. Yeah, let's check with P and Z, there's some here, but there's some aren't. So, let's check with them and see what's good for them first. Okay, let's move on to item J, City Reports. Chad, come on up.
It's good, it's quiet right now, so we're just in the process of slamming the door on the parks. We're just kind of closed, we closed these last restrooms up today. The weather's gonna finally change, it's been a nice November. So, parks are all done, kind of closed everything up with that, so, which is good, it's a season, not much change, but it's good for the parks. Water, we, I mentioned, I think last month, that we, this was a heavy water sampling year, which we done, I think it was about five grand, I think, sampling. Six grand in sampling, we come back, all applying colors, everything's good, so I'd like to see. So, it was a good year, for as much as we pumped, it's a dry summer, we did, mechanically, we stayed running, everything worked out pretty well. So, yeah, the water's in great shape. We're totally on the spring right now, so, that's always nice. Part of Andy and I were trying to inspect manholes, we're getting all that stuff cleaned and sorted out, so we're looking at them. I think, what is it, four hundred or ten, something like that, there's a lot of manholes. So, we're about three quarters of the way through it, valves wrapping up, looking good, they're getting cleaned up, and stuff's coming, last few things are fixing. So hopefully that's wrapping up before the weather really changes. Getting the last thing-
Asphalt's off, isn't it?
They're getting the last bit of that.
They still got some coming?
Yeah, they got a war too.
Tuesday, I think, but- Yeah, so we should, after tomorrow, I think animals have already patched up.
Nice.
Yeah, knock on the door, I'm hoping, yeah. Yeah, we're gonna talk about those street signs, we think they're doing good too, speed signs. That's a nice addition to help with all that. But other than that, I don't have much other than that. Any made any questions, any concerns?
Are we officially moving materials to Hyrum yet?
No, well-
No, we can't anymore. No, the school is not, they corded, so we have the big one at the school. So they've corded that manhole, but it's still sitting there. So that cord will move over, we'll plug that hole, the new one will go. That's, I think that will be next week, we hope, yeah.
The last thing is just finish checking the manholes, make sure that it's gonna get past them, they're not full of dirt and they're routed. And then, just these little fixes of, there's a few areas that we identified in the videos with, like, low spots that are fixed. But they're, they're almost done, we're days away.
We had some, we had some rowdy irrigation, which we all been victim of rowdy irrigation, where you just turn it in the ditch and let it go for six or seven hours, and it finds the least path to restriction. And that's available, pipe here and there, not too bad though, it's been pretty good, but, yeah. So, we're, but we, we are, the pump station is on, but it's just like a little rainwater, a little this, a little of that. So it's running maybe once every three or four days, it kicks on for a minute. But we're just doing that to make sure the skate is all working, it's talking to us, we're getting signal and all that stuff, so. So good, so far, so good, yeah, we think it's coming.
Demeter in Hyrum's- All that kind of stuff.
I don't think there's any, they're running off of ours for a little bit, I'm trying to get their setup, which is too hard.
We went out through that whole, we went from where it turns back to gravity there on the highway, all the way to the, almost to the plant where we died. And we checked all those manhole cords out in that one day.
Nice stroll through the fields.
Nice stroll through the fields, yeah, it, it's all looking good, it's all clean, it's all swollen, so, cross our fingers. Yeah, it would be nice to have that. We're just about, we're a couple months, maybe three years of digging dirt since we actually started turning dirt, so.
I thought it was a little longer than that.
It feels like a lifetime, yeah.
Well, that's, that's when they started digging, before that.
Yeah, that's digging.
Three, four years before that.
Yeah, you had a couple, three years of just paperwork, yeah. That's actually dirt digging, yeah, so. So, yeah, we haven't had to drive all the way so long for a while, yeah. So it's nice to see it coming back, and, you know, we're, we're, we'll bring in a, oh, three or four tons of, it's called EZ Patch asphalt, so it works really well in the winter months, we know we're gonna get a little something here or there, show up. So if you see something, give us a call, we'd appreciate it. If you don't see an old pothole or anything like that, it shows up.
I know the, I know the highway, the Main Street crossing on the north, there were stoppers, ran their hits.
Yes, they're gonna rip that out, when they pay that, we'll talk to them.
It's getting done, a little bit of work. I see them on their grade right now, so.
Yeah, we're supposed to pull that out when we do it.
They're trying to get that in this, this fall, it looks like.
Yeah, I think maybe tomorrow or Monday.
They got one more day.
Yeah.
It's a shame, so.
Is in front of Millville, happy sitting and finishing?
Visually, I didn't, I, I go to work when it's dark, and everything is dark, I can't see.
It's supposed to be everything, by tomorrow, everything, so, yeah. I've told them like three times, I'll call them again in the morning, make sure they get them, but that's where the pavement is sitting when I came down. So, yeah, yep.
Good.
Two quick questions, Gary.
Yeah, do they have a plan for some of these roads that have shrunk in a couple of feet on each side?
Yeah, there's asphalt there, that's, it's dirt, so, we're hoping we plow that off, beyond, yeah.
You think there's dirt that's on top of the asphalt, and that's why it looks not as white as it was?
When you go to my house, it's about this much, that clay just gets so hard, it's just, I hope, I'm hoping we take it off at some point, yeah.
Because they're, they're responsible for that within their bid?
The responsibility is, uh-
Lose work?
Well, yeah, because they're responsible, but we paid for it, so-
So like a cost plus thing, is it?
No, it's just that, we paid by what they do, right? But it was in the, it was in the bid to fix the road.
To fix the roads, but-
But they're not.
Some of those roads that are on the border of, I mean, it's unquestionable that some of the roads have shrunk on the width, so hopefully it is that there's dirt on there, because a lot of them are single roads, like one lane.
And the roads certainly aren't what they were forty, fifteen years ago, or whenever we started this thing. But, we also have a big bucket of money that, as soon as I figure it out, we'll talk about it more, that we're gonna lose for roads.
The less they spend, the more we have on the backend to use to fix some of the things.
Understood.
So, some of those roads might be okay, a little narrower afoot here and there, because we may have other streets we want to put a little more effort into, just kind of balance that at that point.
I know this isn't public comment, but I'm gonna know anyway. Is the South Fields Road gonna get fixed at all from the, I mean, it's shrunk a few feet. From all the trucks going out?
All the trucks going out to get all their plastic stuff out of gravel pit.
That road is destroyed.
It's not a city road.
Yeah.
If a city destroyed it.
We're public, just like everybody else.
Yeah.
The city certainly helped destroy it, but Logan City was bringing down the tread loads of what they were pulling out of Second Dam, but it just was- Not saying we helped.
So there's no consideration for that?
There's no plan right now to fix this up.
We just turned away, and guys were gonna fix it all the way to your road, so.
Okay, there's no further on the city roads or parks, we'll go ahead and move on to Kate. Clay, do you have any to do for future changes?
Um, I just, I just, um, they, the park, the North Park, liked their own ten foot, I know we've looked at that.
I've turned that off twice, yeah, some reason they-
They were on last night. No, they're off now, I should have. They're off for, off, off for the winter.
Yeah, they're off.
So the casters are still gonna come in and discuss that?
Shut them off Tuesday night.
But they knew that this would be a-
I didn't know that, it was Tuesday night, and they were on after nine o'clock.
Oh.
Oh, they've been on, they've been on-
They're off now.
Yeah, but they're off, they're good right now.
They're working now, we're getting big deal.
They contacted me, so I said I'd follow up when we go up there, and so, I went up, and you stand over by his house, I mean, the whole side of his house is lit up like it's daylight, right? So, I don't, I don't know if there's, I know they tried tipping them down, it was kind of limited there, but, anyway, I just say in the future, you know, we'll work on this.
That's probably gonna be on the next agenda, he's probably recommended.
We'll get it, I've been communicating with him, and so.
Okay, okay, I think that's all I had.
Okay, thank you.
The only thing I have is a suggestion, is through this process, is, and I love suggestion, more work for you guys to do, but, especially because I don't have to do it right.
Yeah.
I've, I've just been contacted a few times through this whole process about how I can get involved, speaking of the few people that contacted me. The, the three that I have in mind have contacted me about serving on planning and zoning, and they asked how that process works. And I said, "Well, I don't, we really don't have a process formally." So, I just would encourage maybe to come up with a process, the, somebody that wants to get involved of how they can be, get involved.
Give us those names, where you're giving to me, email to me.
So, anyway, I just, just a suggestion, because there's not really a formal, at least that I know of.
All other appointed positions we post, and we have it, they're just-
There really hasn't been a lot of interest I ever-
Yeah, but it's, it's maybe out of laziness too. So we should be posting those, then, both people that have been serving, that their term is up, can apply again, or consider they're interested in going again, as well as these other people.
Well, I just want, you know, that as many people that want to get involved to be involved, yeah.
You're done?
Yeah.
Sure. So, I don't know if we want to get this on the agenda, the next meeting? Or if you want to wait a little bit, but if you want to start talking about addressing the master plan? I don't know if you want to wait for the new council to start doing that, but, just want to start talking about that and get, get going on that.
We can, we can add it to the agenda, and at least have a little discussion on it.
There, there is one grant that is generally good for that, that I'm, it's the only grant I've been denied on before. But I, but it's one, I, I reached out to them to see what I did bad, or see what I can do better. So it's, there's a grant that is a possibility of getting fifty percent, and it's in, it's in December, so I'm planning to apply for that. But there should be a plan to, a bit, Jim, a plan regardless of whether that money comes through, because we probably won't offer four or five months. So, yeah, however you want to do it.
I'm okay, we should start talking about it. We've talked about it, right? It's been like, get the sewer behind us, and then we can open the master plan back and start that conversation. I know we're not flowing yet, but I think we're, I think we're probably close enough, I would, I'd agree with that.
We need some people on it, make sure.
It's a process, it's, it's- It's a lengthy process, right, to go through the whole scope and the whole survey and, and everything associated to it, so it will take some time, but.
Other than that, I just want to thank these two guys, thank you very much, it's been fun serving with them.
It's been a good time.
And I'll have some dumber jokes for next, for last time. Man's nervous.
I'm cringing.
Maybe you'll get a new seat lock set into this.
What does it have, as long as it doesn't come up with the apostrophe or whatever it was ever been?
I have a name for that, with the apostrophe. That makes me cringe too.
Just, just echo kind of what, what Daniel said, I did want to talk about the P and Z process, make sure we, we have something that provides opportunity. I also want to talk a little about planning and zoning. Growth is coming, we now have the sewer, we're gonna have developers, and the state law has changed in relationship to how subdivisions are, are processed through. We've got great people, I just want to make sure that they have the tools in their toolbox, and they have the training that they need to feel like that when people do come to town, that they know how to navigate that process, and make sure that what, what Millville is hoping for and looking for is not ran over by, by the developer with the team, you know, type of situation. So, I just want to make sure that they're well-equipped and, and have what they need, you know, in training and everything else, so that they're comfortable. I'd like to talk about that with the council.
Okay. Yeah, we'll, we've talked about that too, so, we'll get that on the agenda too. Alright, Corey, do you have anything?
Yeah, I do, just two things really quick. The annual audit's going well, the, we had three auditors sitting here for a week or ten days, and they're, all their in-office stuff is done. They're just working on everything, it's, takes a little longer when we have this single audit, we'll have it next year too, because of all the federal money we have for the sewer. Then after that, we'll, we should be out of that money. So, it's going well, we should have a report, we should have your annual audit report at the next meeting. That's still, I think we're still on target to make that, so. That's going well, and then, I just wanted to talk really quickly about closed meetings or executive sessions. We've, you know, done probably five total since I've been around, and we've always, you've always known it's coming, it's been posted on the agenda before the meeting, which has been perfect, that's how you want to do it. There's some talk, I'm on a thread I'm on, about, there's, sometimes there's not an opportunity to get it posted in times, to have a closed meeting. So they bring it up during the city council meeting, and then close and go into a closed session. And legally, I think that's defensible, but there's a possibility of it being problematic, so a lot of cities now are just putting, and the reason you can hold a closed meeting is-
Put it on their agenda, so it's stated.
They put it on every agenda, either as an agenda item that they just pass over for almost every week, or almost every meeting, or just at the bottom have a, like Providence has at the bottom of that saying, "We may go into a closed session for these things." Again, we don't have very many, but just if you, if you want that on there just so you can, we can put it on the agenda. The only way you can, and, and you've been good about not requesting the closed meetings for things, like you just want to not have these people here, you can't do that. You can have a closed session for pending or reasonable imminent litigation, professional incompetence of an employer, an elected official, or land acquisition, or the sale of real property, those, that's it. And, so, do you want it on there, or do you want to just keep doing what you're doing? The, the fear is that if you have a closed session, it's not properly on the agenda, that somebody can challenge that in court, and it just opens up what was legally closed in the meeting, you have to disclose everything that was talked about, which could be problematic.
I mean, we don't, it's not gonna change, in my opinion, whether we have a closed meeting or not, right? I mean, it's really just making, it's just covering the legal side of things to protect the city.
You've never, to my knowledge, said, "Hey, do we have a closed meeting?", and we, and you didn't, because it wasn't on the agenda.
We typically know ahead of time, but-
Yeah.
I, I mean, to cover it, I'm okay with it.
I, I would recommend you put it at the bottom, but then if, if we have a planned closed session, then we'll put it as a, one of the items, but then we cover it either way. Does that sound okay?
Yeah.
I just wanted to tell you before it just shows up on the agenda, to make sure you're okay with that, but, that's all I have.
Okay.
I had sent you guys the planning and zoning minutes from this last meeting. Planning and zoning had a lengthy discussion on rezon the south part of town to R3. Wanted to see if you guys wanted to move forward with that rezoning. They also wanted to add a new zone, residential zone, to be one acre. We had talked about, I don't know if this was part of it, they had talked about removing the third acre as a future option for subdivisions. So any new subdivisions coming in, minimum would be half acre.
I didn't read that.
I did, I did read this, I appreciate the conversation. I think we need to address the South Fields, but I don't think two acres is the only thing that's gonna go in the South Fields. So, and I don't think third acres are gonna go away. So, I think everything we've talked about here is part of affordability, and what Millville is, the people it is, I don't think that meets what I feel Millville is.
That wasn't a request for a rezone, because we don't have the authority to do that, that's the landowner that has, I mean, you can't just decide what that's gonna be, it was-